I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, July the fourteenth and ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Mohler.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the June twenty-third meeting as there are motion to receive and file.
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second?
Support.
Not quite sure who said that. Councilmember Harris. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes will be as submitted, stand as submitted. We have a couple of presentations tonight on the agenda. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Dr. Kevin Pollak, president of St. Clair County Community College, will present an update on the college.
Thank you for having me. There we go. No input. That happens a lot. I'll ask a few things to you and then the rest will be about this. Thank you for having me this evening and appreciate the fact that you're gonna get a little update on what's happening with the college. I think you're gonna be very pleased at everything that you hear. This is one of our first shots. This is actually a drone shot of the college, so you can actually see it from a new way of things that we look at. One of the reasons that I'm here is because this college really is your college. Seventy-five percent approximately of our funding comes from tuition and local tax base. So we truly are something that is born from the community and part of the community as well. We've been here for ninety-one years now. I want to give you a little bit of input on some of the things that are going on, the academic leader pieces, the things that were happening here, what we're doing with academics, the new students that we have on campus and some new successes. I want to show you how our campus has been evolving and also how we're trying to keep you entertained, which I know in a meeting like this, you're very happy to hear about. By the way, that particular slide right there, if you've missed it, was Ray Live. It was an amazing performance on our campus. It was an entire show dedicated to Ray Charles. That's the kind of stuff we're having on the campus for entertainment. Students are picking up a lot of new things on our campus. We have new associate's degrees. One of the ones that we did pick up, we picked up the X-ray technician piece from the hospital. So we have the radiologic technology piece now that was in the past really working with us, but the hospital ran part of that. And the hospital did not want to continue that program and we picked it up entirely. We're partnering still with the hospital, but everything is with us. The difference is that the hospital would only allow usually in the past a half a dozen students or so to go through because they really were just doing the ones they were hiring. Now we're serving the entire area by using that program. We always talk about matching up programs with the local needs. One of the other new programs is called Health Information Technologies. It really takes the background almost that a nurse would have as far as medical and clinical background, but ties it along with computer science. A lot of it's billing and coding and pieces like that. In the tri-area, the tri-county area of Oakland, McComb and St. Clair, there are thirty-two hundred jobs in this field. We have seventeen students in the program and we just started it. You can see that this is a possibility for our area. The average starting salary is around fifty thousand dollars for this job. So it's a brand-new program for us. Our nursing program was reaccredited. That's a very strenuous process for us and we're very proud of the fact that we have one of the highest ratings for our nursing program. We have new bachelor's degree options as well. We picked up the Bachelor of Science in Nursing from the University of Michigan Flint, which is now on our campus. We created a STEM institute. And the STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering and Math. It's the area that more demand from businesses go into those areas than anything else. And to do this, one of the things that we decided to do was really try to help interest students in younger ages, junior high, even elementary students, to look at science and math as a field that they may want to go into. Technology and those pieces come from that, though. And those are the types of classes when students get into something difficult, they tend to drop out. Community input? We make sure that our programs are really vetted by the community. We have over ninety different businesses that come on the campus two times a year and sit down with all of our faculty and go through all of our programs. They are the experts in these businesses in their own area. They talk about these classes fit, these programs fit, they want to do this. Is there something missing in what we're doing? So we have ninety different businesses that are represented. Last year, we did over a million dollars in customized training in this area as well. On top of that, we also added several things with the new job training program that came from the state of Michigan. We were able to bring in five hundred thousand dollars for new job training for one business and seventy thousand for a different business. We were looking at a three hundred thousand dollar one for a business that I can't name yet because it hasn't been actually signed. But that's nearly nine hundred thousand dollars in new job training. And the way that worked was the state that captures the business taxes from those businesses allows that money to be filtered back to the college so that we can train their new employees. The businesses eligible if they hire ten or more new employees at at least twelve ninety-five an hour. So this also helped create jobs in our area. We have the Blue Water Middle College Program. You may be surprised to know, along with the Cross Lex Program and dual enrollment, that really twenty percent of our student body are now high school students. That's a huge shift in the things that are happening out in the world today. Eight hundred and five students were high school students in January. That number's going to go up. Now, are they successful? Very much so. There's a ninety percent retention rate for the students that come into the Blue Water Middle College Program, which is higher than our average retention rate. And the grade point average for the students to go into that is actually higher than our average student. So they're very successful. And we hear a lot of great stories. We hear about the one girl who came to us, who had a very low ECT score, really would have had difficulty going into college, came to our program, did very well, had a high grade point average and now is going to Michigan State this upcoming fall. So there's a lot of great stories that are out there. This is also working a lot with the Blue Meets Green and local initiatives to try to have more students look at college as an option for them down the road. We do middle school research, research outreach, elementary school outreach. We had Cleveland on our campus last summer and they came and they ran their regular program right on our campus. Every eighth grader in the entire county, along with Cross Lex eighth graders, tour our campus before they finish eighth grade. Now, the campus is great, tour is great for us because they see all the things that we're doing, but really the idea is to get them interested and excited about college. Now they've been on a college campus, they know what it looks like and they know how it works. So it's a great thing for the community. We also have a lot of learning made fun. If you watch the slides that come up behind you, you'll see several of the new things that have happened over the last year or so. Over the past couple of years, we actually completed the Greenway, which is, you know, we close McMorn. That was a four hundred thousand dollar project. The Fifth Third Innovation Center, which is in the McKenzie Building, was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that was half-funded by Fifth Third Bank. We are in the process, and there's our science museum, of the Noster Science Museum opened this past year and Dr. Noster was generous in donating fifty-one percent of the funding for that. The Greenway, the Science Museum, the Fifth Third Innovation Center, and the newest project we're doing right now, which is a historical classroom renovation, that's what it will look like when it's completed, is another hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. All of those projects were done with fundraised dollars and donations. No money came from tuition, no money came from taxes for any of those projects. All of those were donations to our capital campaign. We were told we were crazy to try to run a million-dollar capital campaign and we did it right at the height of the Great Recession in this area and we raised two-point-two million dollars. One and a half million dollars of that went to scholarships. We have a very generous giving area here in the Blue Water area. That classroom is on the third floor of the main building. It's fifty percent finished. In fact, tomorrow, we're gonna have our fire inspection before we can move ahead with the last fifty percent. As you know, in the main building, it's a hundred and six-year-old building. There's a lot of hidden gems in that building. If you looked at the ceiling in that picture, you see the crossbeams and the curved moldings and the crown molding that's in there? That was all hidden underneath wires, ducts and a drop ceiling. That's all coming out. The classroom will be restored to its original glory as well as being probably one of the best technological pieces in the entire area. So it's just something else for our students and our community to use. We have a lot of cultural things. We say that we're the cultural center of the campus, of the community, and we really truly are. Where else can you go to have education happen? Where else can you go to art? Where can you go for free shows, free concerts? Cultural events such as Martin Luther King Day Celebration? The Port Huron Sports Hall of Fame is on our campus now. Theater performances that are there. And we created a Friends of the Arts Program. We have a lot of things that happen on our campus that are cultural and for the people on our community. And they raise from very modest prices for some to free. Our noon concert series is free and it has been for years and years and years. Summer events. We just completed with Boat Week, our ninety-first anniversary. We had a lot of things on our campus, including a jazz festival on the river, a bluegrass festival, a donation thank you for our donors. And still this summer, we will have Twilight Concert Series on our campus. On the homecoming, which you saw right there, it has those pieces. We were very pleased with all the things that are happening on the campus. Please make sure you check in with us and look on our website and see what's there. There's a lot of things to do. This one you can't see very well, but I'll just tell you, we have about forty-four hundred students on our campus. The youngest was thirteen last year and the oldest was eighty-four. The difference and the challenge for our faculty is this. When you go to a four-year institution, everybody's pretty much between eighteen and twenty-two or twenty-three. They all have roughly the same grade point average or higher and the same test score or higher in order to get in. We have students from all walks of life, all age ranges, all academic abilities, and our faculty have to work with all of them and they do very well with that. We have the best in the faculty. We have thousands of alumni that live in this area. Here's one that, the piece is right in front of you, this is brand-new. The college had a study done on our economic impact in the area. You'll be pleased to know that for the two thousand twelve-thirteen fiscal year, with a combined piece of twenty-two point four million dollars effective in our college operations, thirty-nine point two thousand effective in student spending, and about a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in increased income from our graduates in the area, we have an economic impact of about two-hundred-and-two million dollars for the twelve thousand, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year here. A couple of facts for you. One is, that equals about four and a half percent of the entire population, of the entire regional product generated by us. For every dollar spent on students, they will get about five dollars and thirty cents returned in higher wages to them during their lifetime. For every dollar spent to society on our campus, the community will see about nine dollars in benefits in return. We're a very wise choice for funding, we're a very wise choice for the area. And everybody benefits from that. There's those facts that I just shared with you. And we're thankful for your support because we really are successful, because we really are your college. We're hoping that the support is continuous and of course, I'd be lax if I didn't mention the fact that we have a millage proposal that comes back up again. And I just want to give you the facts on that. August fifth is our millage renewal. The college has two millages. One is for one and a half mills, which is perpetual. That was created when the college became a community college. It's actually slightly less than that now because of the headley. We have a secondary millage, which is a half of a mill, and that is the renewable one that comes up every four years. On our last time, we had it passed with a sixty-eight percent success rate, again right in the middle of the Great Recession. It's not an increase. It's about twenty-five dollars for every homeowner has a value, market value, income of about, value of their home of about a hundred thousand dollars. What is interesting is that those two millages combined have us at the twentieth lowest millage in the entire state out of twenty-eight community colleges. So our area really does do very well with our millages. This millage, I can tell you a couple of things about it. One is, it's specifically earmarked for technology, for building and site renovations, and for workforce development. None of the money from this goes into salaries, none of the money from this goes into wages or benefits. We have a line item that we move over every June, which is the entire capture of our millage for this, and it generates about two-point-six million for us. We move those into a fund and we can show line-by-line everything that we're doing with them. Sometimes we don't do anything right away. The college has about thirty million dollars in deferred maintenance. When you have a hundred and six-year-old building or a ninety-one-year-old building, you have deferred maintenance, even with the new ones. What we do, though, is we save that for when we're ready to do things. This year, we're actually redoing all of the heating and ventilation system in our fine arts building. It's a four-million-dollar project. Those are the types of things we can do with this type of millage that comes through. So again, we're very pleased with the fact that everyone's been so very supportive of it. I want everyone to understand the facts behind it. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Does anyone have any questions? I don't think so.
Thank you so much for your time.
You did such a good job. We don't have any questions.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I think that, Kevin, that's a very good job that you're doing over there. You were able to show us all, you know, how we're touching not just the, that middle population of eighteen to twenty-four, but almost like, what, thirteen to eighty-four years old? I mean, we all got a grand investment and you're taking that and you're really making that grow and reaching out, creating jobs and getting the kids prepared to meet those jobs head-on. So I think it's exciting and I hope we all go to the polls and vote for this, the millage, the upcoming millage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for a great evening.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Rep. Can I make one last comment here?
Certainly. Councilmember Harris.
Kevin, I just want to make a little comment.
Yeah, don't run too fast.
You know, I got visions of the future. Number one, I'd like to see the campus, you know, expand. I might not see it in my lifetime, but I'd like to see it expand from McMorn Boulevard up to Glenwood. I think it was, would be a great idea. The other thing, just to tell you, our Labor Council, we have a scholarship program and we get more bang for our buck at St. Clair Community College and I just think anybody that votes no is crazy. This is one that we gotta go for.
In our programs, they do transfer. And right now, one of the governor's initiatives is to really create that seamless transfer. In fact, there's a new program out that is really basically all the four-year publics and all the community colleges signed on, guaranteeing that the first thirty hours will transfer. And we're in the process of working through the second thirty hours, which will really mean that students that take the classes the first thirty hours here, which is really the gen ed requirements, will guarantee any of the public four-year institutions here in the state. The second ones usually will go right there as well. So it's a great, we're a third of the cost of the community of the four-year schools and I'm sending kids to school starting this year and I know what it's gonna be like. So, anything else I can do for you?
Yes, one, if I may ask.
Sure.
The Blue Water Middle College that you have on your, and you say the numbers are going up and they have gone up over the years. For the public to know that at the end of not only going to high school, they have a two-year.
Yes.
And the cost to those people?
The cost is nothing. If you're in the Blue Water Middle College Program, books and all materials are covered by the Blue Water Middle College. The reason it's growing is it takes three years to go through the program. So this was the first time that they had the third year up and running and so they've expanded it just a little bit. The other thing is, we actually have support on the campus. We have Blue Water Middle College people on the campuses, councilors, advisors specifically for that group as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you leave my clicker? Oh. Wanted it back up there.
Yeah. I know you need one at the college, right?
We need one at the college.
That's okay. We'll move on to the second presentation.
A proclamation will be presented to Dave Dykstra, Port Huron South Park Lions Club, in recognition of the club offering kid site eye screening during the St. Clair County Four-H Fair being held July twenty-first through the twenty-sixth.
Is Mr. Dykstra here? If you'd like to meet me at the podium, please. Good evening. I will read this and then you have a few minutes, you can say something about this event. Okay. Whereas Lions International was founded in Chicago in nineteen-seventeen and has grown to be the world's largest service club, and whereas the Lions have become particularly identified with their efforts on behalf of the blind and their community service activities emphasize site conservation, services to the blind, youth activities and a wide range of special projects for the benefit of the entire community in which the club is located. And whereas the South Park Lions Club will be conducting free vision screening to children ages five years and under at the St. Clair County Four-H Fair on July twenty-first through the twenty-sixth during fair hours. And whereas this project, kid site screening, produces an image of a child's eyes to develop preliminary determination of the presence of eye disorders, but does not constitute a diagnosis of vision problems. And whereas if a child has a vision disorder such as an astigmatism, the child is then referred to an optometrist or ophthalmologist. Now therefore I, Pauline M. Rep, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Port Huron and on behalf of councilmembers Archibald, Ashford, Harris, Lewandowski, Mohler and Ruiz, do hereby offer the certificate of appreciation to the South Park Lions Club. Call upon the citizens of this community to join me in a salute to this fine service organization for their many years of service and encourage participation in their event at the St. Clair County Four-H Fair. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd like to say a few more.
On behalf of all the members of the Port Huron South Park Lions Club, we again want to thank you. Community involvement is our issue. We not only provide the eye screenings for the youngster, but we work closely with Cleveland School. We present at least five to ten pair of eyeglasses to the people within the South Park area monthly. And we provide hearing aids also. So we try to maintain considerable amount of activities within the community. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for what you do. Thank you. We'll move on now to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on any agenda items or anything else? Can come forward and give us your name at the podium.
Thank you, madam. Mayor and council. My name is Phil Pavilla, live at fifteen-seventy-seven South Allen. I represent St. Clair County and LaPierre County in the Michigan Senate. And I'm here tonight to speak and maybe give a little bit of information on resolution number four that's on your agenda this evening. And that is a resolution concerning the permanent nuclear waste repository that's being proposed in Kincarton, less than a mile from the shores of Lake Huron. And I'm here today to give you, number one, to thank you for putting this on your agenda and taking action on a very important issue. In the Michigan Senate, over the last sixty days, we put the finishing touches on a number of legislative initiatives that have all passed the state senate unanimously that do a couple of things. Number one, we have a senate bill that reaffirms the fact that permanent nuclear waste cannot be buried in the state of Michigan. That's the first thing, we reaffirm it. And we also raised the level of the nuclear waste that can be considered. And so that isn't before this body, but I just want to tell you that as we look and try to influence our neighbors in the Great Lakes Basin, that we're positioning Michigan as a leader on the environmental cause where we're gonna probably set the example and set the standard in the Great Lakes Basin. What's before you today is a resolution that backs up the work that we've been doing in Lansing that calls on the International Joint Commission to get involved in this. And that is the framework that we have through the nineteen-oh-nine Boundary Waters Treaty. And so any place in the United States that we have boundary water, we have a resolution dispute system already in place through this treaty. And what we're asking is that the President of the United States engage the International Joint Commission to further study and work on this premise that nuclear waste should not be buried on the Great Lakes in any proximity. We're also working with the other eight Great Lakes states basin from New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin and Minnesota to let them follow the lead to, this isn't an issue for St. Clair County. This is a very important issue to the entire Great Lakes Basin. And to give you a little example of what the International Joint Commission has done over the course of the last hundred years, they've stepped in and made rulings and some of them could be binding. And it's our process that we have to not only resolve potential disputes, but to further study and put science in charge of this. And so my issue with the Kincarton project is, obviously needs to go to a higher level. The Port Huron City Council and the Michigan Legislature cannot necessarily affect it, but there are tools at our disposal. The other resolution that passed unanimously in the senate was the same language that engages the Great Lakes Commission to also study this. And to give you an idea what the Great Lakes Commission has done over the last forty or fifty years, the Great Lakes Water Compact, where we dealt with water diversion out of the basin. In two thousand and eight, there was unanimous agreement between all Great Lakes Basin states and the two provinces of Ontario and Quebec. So I'm suggesting that we engage both of the organizations in their policy prowess on this project. In terms of where the project is now, there will be additional comments that will be taken at the Board of Review beginning in mid-September. And I plan to submit testimony applied to that process there. So by you taking up this measure, I think it's an acknowledgement of what our clean water means here. And it's a really, it's a long look into the future to say, a permanent nuclear waste facility has significant concerns to the people in the Great Lakes Basin. And Madam Mayor, if you have a question on this issue or anything else while I'm here, I see you have fourteen items on your agenda, so.
While you're here, if anybody does have any comments or questions about this, I'll kind of open it up to the council if they do.
Okay. Senator, do you have any, feel any pulse in Washington as to, what's the buzz around this issue?
Well, after our legislation passed, there has been conversations with our congressional delegation. Our two U.S. senators have acknowledged this plan and are pushing to get the Secretary of State and the President to invoke the International Joint Commission on this. This is not a partisan issue by any means. They are working very hard to engage it. We need the legislature of Michigan to be able to officially get the Great Lakes Commission involved in this. And so that's the action that we've taken there. So I think if I were to sum up this whole issue, it's really been flying under the radar, not only in Michigan, but also in Ontario. And as people are becoming aware of it, it's causing great, so we're elevating the conversation to put science in charge of this.
Okay. And I know you mentioned, you know, at this level, we wouldn't have that great of impact, but it would certainly influence, you know, some of the minds going forward. Is that correct?
It will. And, you know, you are an elected body of nearly thirty thousand people and so you're putting your voice and those voices to this conversation. And we've asked, we're teaming up throughout Michigan and encouraging many communities to do the same thing. Some have already been out in front of this and done it in various degrees. So what we're saying is, not only do, not only is it very important for this body to acknowledge it, but we're also working with the other Great Lakes states and the two provinces in Canada. There seems to be strong concerns in Canada as well as over clean water, so.
Good. I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Nope, I don't think so, but thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council? If you'd come forward, give us your name. You know the whole thing.
Mayor Rep, council and manager, manager Freed, I'm Kristi Hazer, two-nineteen Huron Avenue, and I just want to take a quick minute to say a very sincere, sincere thank you for all the work that has been done for Blue Water Fest and particularly the police and fire departments, the streets and public works department. We just could not have done what we were able to accomplish without their help. In particular, Sue Child for your help on the permitting, former manager Bruce Brown, Mayor Rep and James Free for being judges for the light boat parade. We appreciate it, especially Chief Reeves and Roger Wesh and the DDA. Thank you so much. I'll have a report for you soon, not quite ready yet, but I think the news is good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council? If you want to come forward, give us your name and you have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Freed, my name is Ralph Roberts, seventeen-eighteen Edison Shores Place, and I just wanted to come and reiterate my opposition to the monthly water billings that you are planning. Since my letter appeared in the Times Herald, I've had many conversations at the Sandfest, at the McAdaw Races and not found one person yet that is in support of it. I followed the talkback, Times Herald comments, everything's negative except for one person who said they thought it might be easier, but then couldn't understand the hiring of more people to do that. So I'm asking you to reconsider it and maybe give people more, an opportunity to give you their impression of what this is gonna do to them. Not having the opportunity for automatic pay, that's another option that was gonna make to make more people late on their bills, so again, I think it's a negative thing that you're doing this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the Council this evening?
My name is Shirley Watts, and greetings, Council. I approach because of my interests, my interests. Thank you very much for wanting to clean the basin and also come in Canada's interest in revolution. And, Mr. Pollak, the only question I wanted to say about that is, how many jobs would it bring in? And how many students, when they graduate, come back here and do anything to help the city up here? Because I see a large void here. There's a lot of, you know, it looks, excuse me, it looks like a ghost town here, okay? Excuse me. I was raised here, I'm fifty, I'm sixty-five years old. My mother was born here. And it really looks bad here. You know, you have beauty, Bank of Montreal have remodeled quite a lot of these individually-owned projects. But there's too many projects here for it to be a small town. You know, I feel, I'm just saying something I feel. I feel that the people should have been given three to four percent loans to bring up their property. Houses should have been built with lean tubes or either garage for people that were poor that could afford, you know, that were working poor, because we have the working poor, that could afford these things. Now, this is just my idea, and I would like for Mr. Pollak to think about that, because I noticed that most of the people that graduate or do whatever their parents want them to leave, or they do not come back. And if you do not bring your riches back, then you cannot grow. And I've seen foreign students go to university and leave the university and go back to their country and create and make it a better world. So, that's all I have to say, and I think that is thought-worthy. Greetings.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the City Council this evening? Seeing no one, I declare public comment closed. Whoops, as it falls off. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Excuse me, are you at the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I would like items ten through thirteen removed.
Ten through thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Rep., I would like number six removed.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tem Archibald to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Support with the changes.
We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Items on the consent agenda, we have approved the scheduling of a public hearing for August 11th to hear comments on the proposed amendments to the Brownfield Plan for the Water Street Hotel Marina Development Project at 2021 Water Street, confirmed and approved single lot special assessments for special trash pickup and/or snow removal in the right-of-way, and certified the delegates to serve at the 2014 Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan Annual Meeting in accordance with Municipal Employees Retirement Act of 1984 as amended. We will move on then to communications and petitions.
Number one is granting the request from Blue Water Habitat for Humanity to waive the building permit fees associated with the relocation of the Restor to be opened at 3524 Pine Grove Avenue.
Is there a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
You get the Michigan Municipal League paper like I do in their magazine, and they spoke about some of these things and what we can do for nonprofit organizations and things like that. And I just wonder if we would be in jeopardy of doing something that we shouldn't be doing. And if you'll note at their convention in October that they're going to have a special session on what you can use your monies for, and then basically, they referred to nonprofits and things like that. So, as much as I think that we should do this, I think that we have to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Mayor, yes, Councilmember Ashford.
I was wondering if Ms. Harmer could speak to that and clear air a little bit on that and what we do, because I know we do extensive study into actually even being okay.
Just going to bring in the attorney with her.
She's a smart girl. You're bringing the big guy with you. Okay. You don't have any more back there, do you?
Yeah, basically, the rule is that you cannot give your assets away. So, you can't give assets away to a not-for-profit entity. But this is talking about waiver of fees, which doesn't fall within that same rule.
Good.
So, it's not illegal to waive the fees.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have a question, Councilmember Lewandowski?
I know Habitat's a nonprofit, but is the Restor a nonprofit?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
I was curious.
And it's something that we have done for other nonprofits in the past. It's not been recent, but we have done it in the past, I believe. So, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on from the City Manager, number one.
Number one is City Manager James Freed will discuss findings of baseline financial assessment.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm going to step away from the seating, and when I do that, I'll be using a lapel microphone, which sometimes causes feedback. If you could mute your microphones during my presentation, it'd be much appreciated. Can you hear me okay? When I interviewed to be your City Manager and when I hired on, I made a commitment to you that during my first couple of weeks in my tenure, I would do what's called a baseline assessment of our operations and also do what's called a baseline financial means test as well. Tonight, I wanted to present my preliminary findings to you based on those baseline assessments. I thought it'd be appropriate firstly to acknowledge our general fund to briefly explain where our revenue comes from. We have three mainstreams of revenue. We have our income tax, which, as you can see, in 2009, when the recession hit, took a rapid decline. We also have our property tax, which also has a steady decline since 2009. One of the most volatile areas of our revenue is state shared revenue, which is out of our control. It's a statutory state shared revenue. When the recession hit and sales tax declined, that also declined. The Legislature has raised that up a few percentage points this year, and I am hopeful that in the future, it will continuously grow at one to two percent, but that's assuming economic rebound. We did get some news out of Lansing today that the revenue projections are about seventy million dollars off in the first quarter of the year. So, that's always a volatile number. So, that's where our revenue comes from. Looking historically over revenue and expenses, you can see that our revenue has generally kept pace with the expenses. Except for the last couple of years, including this year, we have a structural deficit, meaning we will appropriate fund balance to cover that deficit, of $231,000. But that is after we subsidize the general fund with a transfer of $435,000 from the land purchase fund. So, in all actuality, the general fund has a structural deficit between $500,000 and $600,000. However, we've been able to transfer money from different funds to help patch that. And we'll talk more about the land purchase fund. Our fund balance in general fund is slightly above $4 million. However, when you're, and that includes a transfer of $435,000. However, when we're structurally in a half a million to $600,000 deficit, if we continue as we are, we will rapidly deplete those assets and that resource. That provides the about four and a half million dollars, represents about twenty percent previous year's expenses, about twenty percent of, it's about two months of operating capital in the bank at any given time, and we will rapidly deplete that number. This is a pie chart of our operations, just where your money goes. What is incredibly ununique about this is if you were to overlay this pie chart with any municipality in the state of Michigan, large or small, it would look just about the same. And the reason for that is Port Huron's government does what most governments do. We provide essential services, public safety, in the same proportions. Port Huron government is acting like a normal government. We're not doing anything weird. And so, that's what that pie chart represents. The water fund. Currently, the water fund has been running a deficit since, for as many years as we can remember, but this year, it's running a $1.1 million structural deficit in the general fund. This is without any transfers in. The wastewater fund this year is scheduled to have a $3.8 million deficit. We've had deficits for the last decade. Combined utility funds, you see our revenue versus expenses, we have been averaging between about, I'd say around, $4 to $5 million deficit. This year, we'll be at a $4.9 million deficit in the wastewater fund. To give you a comparison of what that deficit looks like, you have our, in blue, the projected deficits for the next couple of years, and then you have that in comparison with the 14, 15 operating budgets. So, there's some who say we can cut our way out of that deficit. But that deficit almost equates the size of our entire fire department and most of our police department and our parks and recreation, meaning if we wanted to cut to patch the deficit, we'd have to eliminate an entire department. It's just not doable. Land purchase cash balance, many people ask, well, how do you run these deficits without adjusting them? Well, we've had a golden goose, the land purchase fund. And from the land purchase fund, we have been transferring multimillion dollars a year to help cover the losses in the utilities and in the general fund. However, based on the projections, we're going to run out of money in the land purchase fund, quickly depleting our assets. This is where the land purchase fund derives its revenue. It's actually from TIF capture, meaning way back in the day when the land purchase fund was founded with some grant money, and we developed land, sold land, and the industrial park made some money. And then, we instead of, we took that money and we used it as an intergovernmental loan fund, meaning if the DDA wanted to do a project, instead of bonding it out, they would borrow money from the land purchase fund and pay it back over time. So, you have here various streets and TIFAs that have borrowed money that are continuously paying them back. But even with those land transfer funds, the fund is not sustainable, meaning there's no fund integrity. The revenues are not keeping pace with the expenditures that transfers out to the general fund and the utility funds. Something will have to change there. In addition to the annual operating losses, we currently have a debt service in the wastewater and water fund of about $11 to $12 million a year. That's because we have about $107 million in debt because of the CSO project. We had an average of about $7.1 million in principal payments a year, $3.4 million in interest payments a year. New borrowings have been approved for the Nern Street project with $2.5 million for sewer and $2.3 million for water. We are currently, in this year, 2015, the idea was is that there was enough cash in the land purchase fund or future capital in the land purchase fund that we would build a bridge till about 2020. And our debt, the best way to explain it is kind of like a snake swallowing an egg. You can see it passing through the hump here, and then eventually, it tapers off. In about 2021, we'll see a drop of about $1.6 million in our debt service payments for the CO project, that CSO project. And then, you'll continue to see those debt payments drop. The idea was is that the land purchase fund was a bridge, keeping rates low and using the land purchase fund cash to build a bridge until those debt payments reduce enough where it would self-heal the deficit. Unfortunately, based on my projections and working with the finance team, I believe that the land purchase fund will run out of money before we build it, meaning we jumped off a cliff, but we didn't have enough speed to get to the other side. So, some adjustments are going to have to be made. Upcoming non-CSO capital projects, in addition to the CSO project, we have about $27.5 million of work that needs to be done, replaced water mains that are fifty years old. And on the annual basis, we need to spend about $1.3 million of capital projects to keep our system operating. It's kind of like having a car. You got to change the oil, you got to put washer fluid in it, you got to change the water pump. The same thing's with the utility system. There's annual capital costs that must be accounted for. In 2020, after the CSO project, we project that our capital needs will go about $3 million a year. We have about $7.7 million in capital needs at the wastewater treatment plant, and in 2014, our CIP identifies $2.3 million of capital needs at the water filtration plant. So, in addition to paying the bills of today, we have bills of tomorrow that are coming, and we're running out of money. The general fund has done its part. In fact, since 1998, we have transferred about $15.4 million from the general fund. Times were better then, we were running surpluses into the general fund, into the wastewater and water funds to help subsidize those. That's money that could have been used for cops, firefighters, parks, quality of life, infrastructure, but we use that to transfer into those funds. However, now, we're running a structural deficit, and that is no longer an option. The land purchase fund transfers have been significant. In fact, since 2002, we have transferred about $29.1 million from the land purchase fund into the utility systems, subsidizing their loss. And in fact, this year, the Senior Citizen Fund will transfer $2.4 million to the sale of our property several years ago will go towards that subsidy. And even then, that fund is running out of money. Another thing plugging the city is overtime. We spend about $1 million of year in overtime cost. Now, not all overtime is bad. There are genuine needs for overtime, police, fire, public works, after calls, water main breaks, crime that needs to be addressed. Overtime is legitimate, but we have about $1 million a year, which is unsustainable with our current deficit. So, something will need to be done with overtime. We're going to have to create a culture in which we rein in the overtime costs in the city. This will be unpopular. Unfunded liabilities. In addition to our current fiscal year deficits in both the general fund and the wastewater and water fund, we have an underfunded pension by $54.4 million. And we have our post-retirement healthcare benefits are underfunded about $47 million. It's close to $100 million of unfunded liabilities. Not only can we not pay the bills of today, we are unable to pay the bills of tomorrow unless something changes. Our annual contribution to those funds will exceed $3.2 million in the next fiscal year. Summary, the city of Port Huron has a structural deficit in the general fund of half a million dollars, and the city's water and wastewater funds have a combined revenue gap of $4.5 million a year. The land purchase fund, which is served as our bridge, it is served as a means to get by, is rapidly depleting, and I do not believe maintains fund integrity past three to four years. If these, and the negative trends can't be sustained. Something has to change. We need to address the cost of today, and we need to address the long-term liabilities. The question now is, where do we go from here? I recommend to the mayor and the council that over the next month or so, we schedule a series of work sessions in August and late September, in which we look at these issues more in depth, analyze the numbers, speak with the department heads, and get recommendations on how to address these issues. And that is my baseline assessment that I promised you during my interview and I promised you the night I was sworn in.
I'll open it up to council first, if you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make.
I've got so many here.
Councilmember Ashford?
Thank you, Councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Rep. So, your summary, you noted the three areas, the land purchase fund and the half a mill, and also land purchase. While you were looking, did you have any vision, visionary visions of solutions?
You know, I think first and foremost, I have a fiduciary responsibility to do an honest assessment of the data. You know, I get paid to bring you guys the facts, and you guys make the policy decisions. So, what I believe that I'm hopeful about is that we are better off than most communities in the state of Michigan. And the challenges we face can be, can find solutions through marginal means, meaning acting today in a timely fashion, we can address these issues. But there, you know, indecision is a decision, and the longer we wait to research these issues, to look at viable policy solutions, time will only exasperate our problem. And I'm hopeful that during these work sessions, we can dive in. I threw a lot at you just now, and what I really want to do is, in these work sessions, provide you the opportunity to meet with the department heads, to further look at what issues we're facing. And then, when we have all the facts and we further define the issues, then we'll talk about solutions. But I think it's important first to define the challenges we face, and that's what I think I've done tonight and I want to do in the work sessions. And then, we'll work with our team in a group approach defining those solutions. And I have ideas, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying them right now, there's a lot of different things. There's going to be no silver bullet. It's going to take, a lot of levers are going to have to be pulled and maneuvered to address these challenges, but it's doable.
Okay.
So, even though we have challenges, we can address them. There's some communities that have challenges and they don't have a way out, but we do. And so, I'm confident that working together, we'll be able to demonstrate the leadership necessary to show a viable path to a prosperous future for our community.
Right. And I didn't expect, when I asked you, that you had some kind of magical answers or whatever, but just the fact that you noted that you have already identified it based on the baseline data that you showed us up there. But my sense was that, and you answered that, we're managing, but we need to take action now in order to be safe for tomorrow.
We've been robbing Peter to pay Paul, but eventually, someone's got to pay the piper, and that time's quickly coming.
So, we got to grab Peter's coattail and push him back?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think it's important, let's get together in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Let's review this data, let's, you know, our department heads and our staff, the greatest asset we have is our people, and I believe that we can all work together to find some solution and common ground. But I want to be very honest with the challenges we faced. There's going to be some changes that are going to need to be made, and there's going to be some tough decisions that are going to be to be made, but that's the fiduciary responsibility we have to ensure essential services to our people.
Yeah. Mayor Rep., just lastly, and I think that was a very astute, very creative and... Mayor Rep, just lastly, and I think that was a very astute, very creative and profound report that you gave, and I appreciate that. And I remember some of the slides, it's not new to us, because some of the slides we have seen before. But you are able to bring that out, so I would like to thank our financial person, you know, for even tipping that iceberg for us. But you just, you know, hit a home run by bringing it home and, you know, putting it where it...
The data I brought you today is nothing new, so.
Well, it's something new when you call for action. Now that's new.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's one thing, it drives me nuts, my biggest pet peeve is, I always feel like we use the term, our society uses the term "leadership" too flippantly. And I think that by working together, and working with the community, and our people and our department heads, that we will show the people of Port Huron what real leadership looks like, and a model that can be duplicated across the state.
Yes, we can. And we will.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I know we had a little kind of lead up to this, and just to comment, you know, I went back and revisited the 2007 roundtables. And the roundtables then told us the same things you're telling us now, and evidently we just failed to follow. We had talked about four days of the city hall being open, we talked about reducing hours, and many things like that, and for whatever reason, we didn't do it. I don't understand, we've been getting pictures, rosy pictures every year, that, you know, it's going to get better, we do have debt. And that's not happened. I could say it in stronger terms, I feel we've been pimped to less half a dozen years. Maybe that's too strong for everybody, but it's just a point that you wonder why. The final question I got is, when I look at it, you look at the cities that have income tax in the state of Michigan, why are we all in trouble? Or the majority of them? Maybe that's something we can talk down the line. But if you actually look at the cities with city income tax, they are the ones that are having the problems. And I don't think it's just leadership, I just think it's, I don't know what it is, but there's some connection.
Well, you know, I know I talked before, but I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that we have taken a lot of initiatives. I wasn't here back, you know, when I just got back here on the council. But I think some of the steps that the city have taken, I mean, you know, cutting down on the workforce that you did, there's a lot of things that you have done, but what we're saying today, and I think that, and he already spoke so eloquently of it, so it's more that we can do to get to where we have to be. So don't, you know, I don't want to say we just sit there, or you guys have been sitting here, because I've seen evidence of things that you have done, and I want to be thankful for those things, so.
And let me be very clear. The council and the staff, over the last couple of years, have made extraordinary measures. You know, some people say government's too big, and we should slash government. Well, here's the facts. We've cut our workforce by twenty-five percent in the last couple of years. Our employees have not had a raise, and more than three, four years have not had a raise. So the city employees are now doing the jobs of two or three people without a raise. And I believe that, you know, this city has cut back, but you are absolutely right, council member, there's more to do. And that's what I'm talking about tonight, is there's more to do, there's things we have to look at. And I am confident that we can move forward and protect our employees. I don't think we're going to be cutting employees, you know, I don't want employees to go home thinking their job's at risk, because it's not. I believe that if we act in a timely fashion, and be creative in our policy solutions, that we can protect our employees, ensure public safety, and our essential services for our residents. But that means we have to act soon, rather than later. And so that's where the leadership comes in.
Mayor Rep. Yes. Mayor Protem Archibald.
I don't think any of this is a surprise, it's just all lumped together, it doesn't sound very good. But we've all known that we were facing this insurmountable debt that was going to peak in 2020, and I think we've been warned all along that it was coming. And we've tried to balance it on the backs of, I've not heard of the residents too much, and how do we do this? And kind of, we suffered a little to pay for it at the city level, as well as the residents paid a little. And it's going to be a challenge to do it, and it's going to hurt in some ways, but it's something we're going to have to do in order to address this, and rather than sit back and hope that they all balance out in the year 2020, because it looks obviously like it's not going to. And I think we've all known that, I don't think any of this is a surprise. It's just a matter of, how do we do this that is most beneficial to the city with the less painful financially to our residents?
And, Madam Mayor, I will say, I look forward to these work sessions. I look forward to educating, better educating all of you on where we're at, but also informing the residents. You know, we'll do some community forums, get feedback from people, and really, you know, let's analyze what the beast we're facing is. And so I look forward to that. And thank you for the opportunity to share that with you all tonight.
I'll say, I don't think we're in as bad a shape as it presents itself in there. I mean, a lot of these projections are based on projections that we're looking at today. You can't tell tomorrow if property taxes or income taxes, money's going to go up, or water fund money's going to go up. So, yeah, it's bad, and we definitely got to take a look at it and be prepared to face those challenges. But I don't think it's as bad as, you know, as some people may be led to believe. I mean, obviously, I'm not, you know, when you shot at Mr. Freed over there, I think he did a good job putting it together. And you do got to warn the community about what's coming down the road, but I don't think it's anything we can't get over.
I think you're right. Today, addressing these challenges will be easier today than they will be three to four years from now. And when I say "time exasperates the problem," I'm confident that if we take, you know, move levers a little bit today, we can make bold gains in the future. When I interviewed, I talked about holding a long stick, and small moves here make big waves in the futures. And that's what these projections show, the compounded exasperated problem if we're in action. And so, you're right, council member, I think that working together with these small changes, we can make some real differences.
I was pleased to hear the city manager talk about the workforce that we have, and all the sacrifices made along the way, and all the jobs, and the job that they've done over the past years that had been on council. And I'm impressed, I continue to be impressed. And again, I agree with Councilman Lewandowski, that it's something we can take on. I don't think it hurts that we have representation from Lansing hearing the same thing, that we have that connection, and we're following in the steps of all those suggestions that have come from Lansing about working together, combining services. And I think we're a pretty good model for that. Plus, trumping the whole thing has been the sewer separation project. There are few communities that have had that hammer smacked them over the head as we have.
Absolutely.
And yet, we're standing on solid ground, and I think it's a challenge we'll take on.
I will say this, take this opportunity, a lot of people don't know this, but Senator Pablo was a leader in fighting to protect revenue sharing in the last fiscal budget. And Senator, we appreciate those efforts. Thank you for that. You fought hard for Port Huron, and we are thankful for that.
Well, I just want to say, I'll just add to that, thank you for the presentation. And as everybody said, it's certainly not a surprise in the sense that, you know, back even, no, 2007? I guess the same, I'll go with what Councilmember Harris said, with the, this was all brought out, it was brought out at that time in the community forums, it was also brought out publicly, that we needed to do something. And I guess I would be a little bit more honest about it, I mean, we've stepped aside and not wanted to have high water rate increases, and that's why we've been balancing that particular thing by making all these transfers. But at some point, you do have to address that. And I think that's what you're saying right now, is that this is, we can't continue to keep doing that and not look at the future. So we just want to be prepared so that we don't end up leaving a legacy to someone else that's, you know, a deficit. I mean, it's a deficit, but it's manageable right now, but you certainly don't want to leave it four or five years from now and have a big problem. So I think we do need to address it, so I would assume that you will have that call and/or set up by an email to everybody's convenience as to when we can get together and do a work session, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for bringing this up and for researching it.
Thank you.
And we'll move on then to from the city manager, number two.
Is recommending approval of the request by the property owners to remove the sidewalk on the west side of the property located at 2703 and 2705 Seventeenth Avenue.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yeah, Mayor...
Councilmember Ashford.
Mayor, yeah, what constituted existing sidewalk system? You know, I didn't know what that was.
Mayor Rep and councilmembers, sidewalks are placed at the pleasure of the city council. Only the city council can order a sidewalk installed. We also have policies that when certain properties are developed as part of our planning or zoning requirements at times, sidewalks are required to be installed as part of new development. When, the ordinance is also clear, that if we're notified that the sidewalk is defective, that my staff goes out and inspects that defective sidewalk, informs the property owner of the defect, and allows them the opportunity to make repair of that defect. If they fail to do so, the ordinance goes on to say, that we are required to make those necessary repairs and bill the property owner. In this particular case, and in some other cases that have occurred in the past, when the property owner was placed on notice to make repairs, they mentioned that the sidewalk was discontinuous. There was no further sidewalk there. Again, the administration on its own does not have the authority under the ordinances to say, well, you can remove it, because only council can order its existence. So we advise the property owner that they must make the necessary repairs, or they could submit a request to remove the sidewalk. And that's what happened in this particular case with these two property owners. And we did an inspection that determined that this sidewalk was not continuous. It occurs across one property, has a very short stretch on the next property, but there is no sidewalk for the rest of the block surrounding it. So, from that perspective, it's not a continuous system, it's a discontinued system. Certainly, if council pleases, we can tell them that they have to make repair, or council, at council's pleasure, you can authorize that it's all right if they remove it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who has a question for Mr. Clegg?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
How do those subdivisions and neighborhoods up there come without sidewalks? Like, you know, when you go in the south end of town, obviously, the ordinances were different probably back then, but...
Yeah, I think that, I don't, I couldn't give you the exact number. I think if you drive in the north end, it appears to me that sometime, maybe in the 50s to 60s, anything constructed after those dates, they were done without sidewalks being installed in front of each property. But I apologize, I don't know the complete history of when sidewalks were required as part of development and when they weren't.
If you were to build a new house in Port Huron today, would you have to put a sidewalk in?
I think it, I don't know, I haven't faced that question in the fifteen years that I've been here. Suffice to say that I think if there was a sidewalk system currently in front of the property, then yes, a sidewalk would have to be replaced or installed. If there was no sidewalk system there, you know, I haven't faced that challenge. I don't know what the planning department would tell people, but, because they usually review that site plan.
Thank you.
Mayor, as a follow-up to that, if you were, if we were to put in a brand-new subdivision right now...
Yes.
Would we require or wish to have a sidewalk system put in?
I think that is somewhat of a policy question that goes beyond just I. I think it was something that we would discuss with our planning department. We would have to see how that particular neighborhood was going to interact with the rest of the neighborhoods around it. Certainly, if there's a new neighborhood coming in, and all the neighborhoods around that neighborhood has sidewalks, certainly there's a walkable community component. If we're going to design a new neighborhood, perhaps walking would be an integral part in that design, and if that was true, certainly sidewalks may well be required. But we're kind of in that gray area now, where we have some neighborhoods with, some neighborhoods without. And in this particular case, we have a little chunk sitting in the middle of nowhere.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to number three.
Is accepting the volume licensing sales program price from CDW-G in the amount of $252.11 per copy for an estimated 225 to 250 copies of the Microsoft Office Standard Edition upgrade software.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there any discussion, questions? Is this to upgrade our...
Yes.
...system to a more current?
Yes. I think we're currently using Office 2003.
Aren't we? 2003.
2003, yes.
So this would be the most current. Okay, 2013. Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to item four, please.
Is authorizing the project amount for the replacement of seven windows at the MOC to be increased by $3,598.95 to allow a matching window to be purchased.
Mayor and council, in front of you, you have...
The windows.
The windows, the one in the far left is the one we ordered, which is incorrect. The specification number on it has changed from the manufacturer, so what it says on the windows we have, we requested that, but in fact, they've changed since way back in the 70s when they ordered these. So we need to have the one in the middle to match. That's the reason for the difference.
Do we have a motion for that one? We need to have a motion first.
Motion first.
Before you start talking, we need a motion to put on the floor first, please. Mayor Protem Archibald?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Harris. Go ahead.
This is the existing window, or the window that we had. As a matter of fact, this came from one of those little corners right there. And then, and we used the tag from the existing windows when we asked for quotations of prices. What we ended up with by using that specification was this one. As you can see, the color is quite different. They'll fit, it's the right size, but if you put it in the building, you're going to notice, I think, the seven windows that we have to replace, because it's more of a tinted, rather than a tinted glass. So, both the vendors who bid originally to provide us with the cost to give us the right colored window, and when we did so, the low bidder remained the low bidder, but there is an upcharge to go to this tinted window. And they don't run them very frequently, they're an odd run. Our understanding is there may be a manufacturing of these windows in September, so we're just trying to prepare for that.
Okay. Any other questions for anyone, or discussion about this? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
I'm still debating. Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item five.
Is accepting the bid from James P. Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $712,767.51 for the Aspen Drive area, Northern Woods Phase One, and Ramblewood area street reconstruction project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yes, Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Is this part of an existing project? It mentioned a phase, I'm not familiar with it.
Mayor Rep and councilmembers, when the city council approved this year's budget, we had these three areas as separate projects listed with an estimated cost. What we are doing is we're milling and resurfacing these roadways, and we knew that we would get a better price if we grouped them together, because it's similar type work. And we did get very competitive bidding, and so, if you looked at our budget, there's actually three separate projects that are being approved tonight from out of the list that's in Public Works' budget.
Okay, I missed that. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I visited some of these properties, this property is over the weekend, and I also went down to the boulevards, which, you know, I've championed in the past, but they're both comparable in the amount of work they need. I guess the difference is the type of neighborhood, and I just hope that I'll probably vote for this tonight, but I really... for this tonight, but I really think that we have to do something for the people on North and South Boulevard.
Yeah, certainly, we agree that North and South Boulevard is similarly ranked, they're in a poor condition. We don't question that at all. In fact, we have 23 miles of roadway in need of repair. Unfortunately, we don't have the 16 million sitting in the bank to do that. And in this particular case, and as council has asked, we're trying to do a mix of fixes. We're trying to select some roadways that don't need utility work while we're doing other roadways that do need utility work. These are some roadways that we can use the voter-approved millage, road millage on, where we don't have to do additional utility work, and that saves us in the utility funds.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I assume South and North Boulevard are both complete rebuilds on that street?
Oh, yes, yeah, they're, they're at a juncture in time that I believe they should be handled the way we're doing the Nern Street project, even though they're not part of CSO. I think water main is needed, that water main in that area is 80-some years old, and the roadway needs to be reconstructed, including curbs. These particular areas, the curb and gutter is in good condition, and the water mains are not beyond their useful life, and I think we can do this without large utility expense.
When is North and South Boulevard scheduled to be repaired?
Well, again, I wish I had a crystal ball. What I, what we try to do is we try to match our funding sources with the project. So we certainly are aware of it, it's on our radar, we would like to do it, but it's a constant balancing of trying to get grant funding, matching it with the project, and then looking at our utility funds and working that out. It's not in the too-distant future, but I wish I could tell you that I had that crystal ball, and I could tell you exactly what year we'll be doing it.
Why wouldn't we put off some of these smaller projects to save up for doing one of those bigger ones, then, I guess? Because, I mean, these people can't keep for another 10 years living on that road like that.
Yeah, well, certainly, certainly, the Nern Street project we had to do because it's CSO. We can't get federal grant funding for all our roadways. Of the 134 miles of roadway that we have, only approximately 60 miles is actually eligible for federal grants. An integral part of maintaining our road system over the last 15 years has been receiving federal grants, and it's totaled, it's averaged about $1 million a year. So sometimes what happens is we, we, we go after those funds, we use those funds on a road that's in very, just the same condition or bad conditions, and we use those dollars to get them done. And an example of that was Sanborn that we did, that happened to be eligible for federal grant dollars, and we were able to get that done.
Now, wouldn't we been able, excuse me, wouldn't we been able to save money when you guys went through, I don't know what that project was called, but the Connor and PV area, and just do, while they're already down there, to do those two streets? I know, obviously, we'd had to bite the bullet then, but...
One of the things that occurred in this particular neighborhood was that North and South Boulevard didn't have any sewer utilities under them. The utilities were in the alleys. And so, again, focusing on the project that we had to do, we heard over and over again from the community, when you're doing your CSO projects, only do what you have to do for the CSO project, don't do extra, and that's what we had to do in that particular case.
But again, wouldn't we been able to save money if we did it at the same time?
Um, yeah, I don't know. Without running the numbers, I can't tie off the top of my head. Maybe, but I couldn't tell you.
Mayor Rep? Yes, Mayor Protem Archibald.
Bob, you mentioned the existing water main and curbs are fine.
Yes.
What is the remaining useful life of the current water main, and will this repair exceed that?
I think, no, I don't believe, I don't believe that's the case. Water mains, we look at water mains from 50 years and beyond. That's when we begin looking. But then what we look at are fire flows, we look at, we look at conditions and breaks. We have excellent records, and we track where our break history is on water mains. And we don't just willy-nilly do water mains. We're very, we're very careful about age. But typically, when we see a water main in that 70 to 80 years in age, that's when we start concerning ourselves. These water mains primarily were installed in the 60s and 70s, and they haven't reached that 80-year point yet. A repair of this, a milling resurface is a relatively minor cost compared to a reconstruction, and we'll get somewhere between 10 to 20 years out of the pavement, depending on the traffic loading on the roadway, really is condition basis. When you look at the current age of the water mains, I think we're safe in making this investment without a significant fear, but perhaps we'll have to go in and have a lot of excavations to repair the water mains. Perhaps towards the end of the useful life of this pavement, we may be there, but certainly not in the first 10 years or so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one last comment.
Yes.
If you look at the capital improvement plan that we just approved, I think it's 17, 18 for one of the boulevards, and 18, 19 for the other boulevard, so they're, they're on the capital improvement.
Yeah, and again, I don't know what funding is going to be like in those years, and I don't know what council's going to approve, but, so we put those out there, but it certainly shows we recognize their need. I just don't know where finances will be in those years.
I think that, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Move on to item six.
Is accepting the bid from Raymond Excavating Company in the amount of $35,000 for installation of the ADA-compliant kayak launch on the Black River east of the Seventh Street Bridge.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion, questions?
Mayor and council, because of the time of year and the aquatic work around the state, we were able, and a solicit one bid came in. This project's been done with a lot of grant funding, community donations, corporate sponsors. I believe, how much have we raised to date? 20...
21,000?
102, okay. I believe there will be a gap between, between the private funding, the private donations, and the, with the higher cost of installation than anticipated, of about $10,000. I would like authorization to use $10,000 in mitigation funds if needed to cover the gap in this project. It's had so much community support, it is tied to economic development, and I don't know if that will be needed, I don't think all of that will be needed, but if it is needed to finish this project, so we would like to see it done this year, I would like authorization as well to use $10,000 in mitigation funds.
Yeah, that is in the actual document where it does say, if there's any shortfall, is to use it from the City's Michigan Department of Transportation mitigation funds, so it is part of it.
Excellent.
So when we are voting on it, you are voting on that also, as well as accepting the bid. Is there any other questions, discussion?
Mayor Rep, just a comment. I'm excited to see us continue adding attractions for both our residents and visitors alike, and adding to our Discover the Blue in Pure Michigan, and bringing more and more people to our community, that hopefully, lots of really rich ones will come and want to stay.
There you go. Anything else? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
We'll move on to resolution number one.
Is authorizing 15 payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Move on to item two.
Is approving the sale of various vacant parcels of city-owned land.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor...
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Are we just buying this stockpile on it, or do we have plans for this?
No, this, we've evaluated these sites, and they serve no public use. In fact, oftentimes, when we tear down a home, it takes several years to go to the tax foreclosure process, we put a lien in the property. So this is property that otherwise would go untouched, and by one, getting it back on the tax rolls brings in revenue to the city, and it also enhances these parcels, because these new property owners will take care of them, getting those maintenance costs off the city as well. So although Councilman Muller isn't here today, he did express support in this early in the week when I met with him privately, this has been a goal of his, as you read in the Times Herald today as well. It's been a goal of the city's as well, to take these properties and get them back on the market. It's money for our community, but it's also not only a revenue issue, but a community development issue, as it ensures these parcels are viable and back in those neighborhoods in a viable fashion.
Thank you. I think this is something we've talked about when we've approved the demolitions of certain properties, that they need to get back into the hands of the people that are adjacent to them, so that we can have them back on the tax rolls. Is there any other discussion, questions?
Just a comment to a man in my neighborhood, I'd love to, love to have bought one of them, but I'm glad the right people got them, thanks.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to item three.
Supporting proposal one on the August 5, 2014 ballot, to eliminate the personal property tax for businesses and provide a stable source of replacement revenue for all local governments, and urging voter support of this proposal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Did they ever constitutionally guarantee this yet, with the use tax gonna, is it constitutionally guaranteed?
I don't believe that it's constitutionally guaranteed, no.
I'll be voting no, because I don't trust Lansing, so. Yeah, they have their word on revenue sharing, so I don't believe they're going to keep their word on this.
You did not say that.
Well, I do believe that there have been some things put into it that do pretty much insure it, but it's not...
It's not constitutionally guaranteed, that's correct.
No, I mean, you are right about that, it is not. Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
No.
Councilmember Archibald? Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I guess I have to say, I think that's kind of a disappointment, only because I don't normally editorialize, but if this does not go through, I think it's, we're going to be in a far worse shape, because this was fought very hard for by the Michigan Municipal League to get this, this particular item to where it was, because we were going to lose, we are going to lose the personal property tax. This gives us something in place of it, so if it doesn't pass, we probably will end up with nothing. So I guess I would just say I'm disappointed that it turned out.
Mayor Rep, can I make a comment on that?
Yes, certainly.
You could still end up with nothing, too, if Lansing gets in trouble down in the road, and they have to take that use tax money and use it on something else, either, because if it's not constitutionally guaranteed, you're not guaranteed that money in the future.
I understand what you're saying, but I think that this was a long-fought battle to get it to this, so...
Yeah, I think we were at the same presentation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, anyways, if there's, well, we're beyond that now, we're on to resolution number four.
Is opposing the proposed construction of a nuclear waste repository in the Great Lakes Basin.
Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Or Ashford? Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
You know, I think this is a great idea, putting this up on here and having our voice put onto it. I don't think anybody wants to see nuclear waste on the Great Lakes. I know I've been rough on Lansing tonight, but again, another one I would say is, first time I heard the Republicans in Lansing say, "Put science in charge," so maybe we need to put a little nuclear waste on a couple other issues down in Lansing.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Move on to item five.
Is authorizing the city clerk to place a charter amendment proposal on the November 4, 2014 ballot, to add a provision to allow candidates running for city elective offices to be nominated by filing a non-refundable filing fee of $100. This resolution was requested by Councilmember Muller.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second? Is there a second? The motion will die to lack of a second. We'll move on, and the next one would be item six.
Is approving the 2014 request for local millage distribution from the St. Clair County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We got two here, so. Mayor Protem Archibald, seconded by Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess the only reason I took this off the consent agenda is the fact that I've, I know our recreation department does a good job, and this tells a lot of things about what we do, and I, and I hate to keep bringing them up here for presentations, but we get over $100,000, and it'd be nice to let the public know where some of this $130,000 goes.
Impromptu. Mayor Rep, City Council, thank you, Councilman Harris. We do try to keep on top of our recreation opportunities here in City of Port Huron, and grateful for all the partners we have. This millage always takes care of various different recreation projects. As you know, this year, we redid both pools, Court Street and Sanborn. The surfacing of them, that was way overdue. We worked on the 12th Street boat ramps, was partially part of this money. Some funding goes to McMorn for different capital improvements that they have. We also resurfaced the front tennis courts at Sanborn in conjunction with a grant. We try to use these funds, you know, leverage them with different grants that we're applying for. This particular year, as you know, we've applied to the DNR again for a trust fund grant, and we'll hope that our millage money will leverage more dollars, so the $120,000 we used for a match for $300,000. So we do try to use this millage money to leverage other grant dollars.
Thank you, I just, I just thought people would like to know, I think you're doing a good job, and anybody that's, with the good weather we've had, gone by Court Street Pool, it's very well-used this year.
Yeah, we had a lot of people, and, you know, again, the community support from last year, too, and just helping to revitalize that pool, we really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thank you. There's no, yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Okay, as I may say, I asked for the 10 through 13, and we could take it all in one.
Oh, we're still working on six.
Oh, you're still, oh, you're still on six?
We haven't taken the vote yet.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, but consider that when you get to that.
Okay, uh, if there's no other discussion, we will take the vote on number six.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Does anybody object to taking ten through thirteen together? No objections, we will do so.
Number ten is approving the reappointment of William Vogon, licensed architect, to the Rental Housing Board of Appeals for a term to expire June tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Resolution number eleven is approving the reappointment of James Watson, master plumber, and Jim Yu, licensed tradesman, to the Construction Board of Appeals for terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Number twelve is confirming the mayor's planning commission reappointments of Jill G. Br- Brion, Jeffrey R. Smith, and Rock Stevens for terms to expire August eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. Number, resolution number thirteen is approving the reappointments of Darlene Jackalick and Joseph A. Vito, Vito, excuse me, to the Local Development Finance Authority for terms to expire June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion?
Yes.
Uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Ashford beat, or Ashford, Lewandowski beat you to it.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, there you go.
That's how I am. Okay. Uh, I, I, I just want to say, I asked these to be removed because I'm, I'm still dealing with this, this, um, pet peeve about there is a better way to, to try to get some more candidates in the pool. So I, I do appreciate all these people, I know some of them, so this is not a personal vote against them to be on there, but it's just my, my need to get my arms around this to, to, to make it palatable in such a way that, you know, I don't expect for the city manager, the city council, but, uh, we need to do some more work in the field to bring some more people up front to take part in things of the city. So I will be voting no on all of these. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Councilmember?
I just wanted to say, I, I served with three of these people, Ms. Brion, uh, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Stevens on the planning commission, they're all highly qualified, and, uh, they do a great job, and, uh, look forward to serving with them some more.
Thank you, anyone else?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Proton, Archibald.
Well, I'd love to see more people come forward and, and serve the city. Um, I, I think in lieu of the fact that any have, at this point, we, I'm happy to appoint those and thank them for being willing to serve again, and in the meantime, we can look for people for the next round.
Anyone else? Did you have something?
No, I, I remember the last time, my first council meeting, we talked about appointments and, and ensuring that we get different, different people of diversity and backgrounds on there, and I will say, since that time, I have met with the ministerial associations, asking them to provide people who would be willing to serve on various committees. I've met with the president of the Port here on N W A C P, and I would meet with your executive committee, uh, later on this month, around the nineteenth or eighteenth, I'll be meeting with the N W A C P committee. Um, and, and we want to ensure that, uh, these boards and commissions represent the community, but we should do that through vacancies, not reappointments. And so, but I will provide enough field of candidates to the mayor for potential recommendations.
Thank you, I'd just like to point out that some of these, um, appointments are, have need of specific qualifications, you have a licensed architect, you have a master plumber, and a licensed tradesman on a couple of these things, so there are cases where there are just not that many available people who will actually be qualified to serve in those positions, but I do understand. Or want to do it for free, yes, you're right. I do understand Councilmember, uh, Ashford's position, and I concur with it, but it, I know from all the years that I've been around, it's very hard to get people to volunteer to do.
Yeah, I've been here before, and I'm not trying to be stubborn, but I think nothing, yeah, nothing beats a failure but a try, and I'm into this trying stage, and then when I see evidence of this, and then I will, whether they're re, re, being reappointed, or whether they're new, I'll be more than happy to, because I know this is a thankless job. What we have is a thankless job. So, you know, honest, and my hat goes off to all these people, but call it a protest vote, call it whatever you want to call it, it's just that I'm standing by my principles and what I believe in. So I believe we need to try a little harder, and that's where I stand.
Okay, and we will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our regular agenda, I do have a couple announcements. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for August the eleventh. The Recreation and Police Department's Color Craze five K fun run is coming up on Friday, August the first. This family event kicks off at Kiefer Park at six P M. Early registration ends on, uh, rates end on Friday, July the eighteenth, and participants can register online or at Palmer Park. And then one other thing, I guess this has come up about the, uh, monthly water bills. So I had asked for information as far as what it's actually going to cost, um, the average homeowner, if the, for the monthly water bill, and if I'm not, if I'm misquoting, please jump up and say so, but, uh, twenty-eight cents is what it is for the, per month in the first year. So it's not, I, I just don't want people to believe that we're all of a sudden adding a tremendous cost on the water bills for doing the monthly bills. And although I have seen a couple comments in the, in the talkback, and have, um, I've probably only received maybe one or two communications, so certainly it hasn't been a great amount of people that have objected to it, and certainly it's something that's been discussed for a number of years, and no one has spoken up until just recently. I'm not discounting what anybody says, I'm just, don't want people to believe that we're all of a sudden having a huge increase because we're going to monthly water bills. The other thing I've asked, and I asked the city manager to look into, is do we really need to, you know, hire two people? Is it an actual expense that we are going to have to have, or are we just still in the exper, in the stages where we're looking into it? And also the issue about being able to have, um, your bill paid monthly, online, or through your bank, or, uh, automatic payments, is that going to be possible? So I don't know if, uh, James, you'd like to say anything about that?
Yeah, I'd say that the idea of hiring several people, that was a worst-case scenario. We haven't even assessed whether that's necessary yet, but whenever we provide policy solutions to the council, we want to make sure we give you a conservative worst-case scenario. Um, and we are working towards developing a system of either online payments or automatic pay. As a municipality, we have a smaller pool to which to spread those costs, say a Comcast or a larger utility, and so there's some cumbersome things we have to address there, but we're working, researching those things to find a solution to it.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before council from anyone?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Proton, Archibald.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Christie Hazard, Main Street, Blue Water Fest Committee, and all of the volunteers on, uh, all of their hard work on running the Blue Water Fest, as well as congratulate all of them and the community on a wonderful weekend, and once again, making all of us in Port here on very proud and putting our best face forward.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Ashford?
I would just like to thank, uh, the, the, the police chief and all the other, uh, agencies, and then the email coming from our city manager, um, in the, in the sad case with the, uh, D, little D out in the south area, the little kid that was missing.[1671.14]